Bureau comes out and it gets the full work up. Obviously, we take any hate crime or what would appear to be a hate crime extremely serious and they're investigating that right now. So that's probably all the lights and sirens and it was probably all taped off?
What was the tape? When I came on, what was the tape off? Just in the firing scene, they probably detoured me at the...
They take pictures, they take anything they can take for any scene. That's probably what it was right on the line of charge. Anyone else? Bill? Okay. Happy holidays. Bill, thank you very much. It was very nice meeting you.
Same here, Sergeant.
We will definitely see you soon. We spoke about the couple issues that we're going to address and I'll have to expect to call you if there's a holiday.
Okay. Good luck. If there's anything you need, just go last night.
Thank you. It's good to be back home. It's good to be back home. Thank you.
Is John in the back? Yeah. Is John in that side? Who's side is he going to be? Do you get into villains?
Thank you very much. Great holiday. Thanks, John. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start off by a public hearing.
Yeah, thanks. Have a good one.
Amendment of section 560-510-16 of chapter 510 of the village called to establish a truck route and more vehicles with a total gross weight in excess of 10,000 pounds from certain village streets.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the board trustees, can you hear me in the back? Okay. The village's court was first adopted, put in a provision that there would be a designation of a truck route system. Most municipalities have it where they try to restrict buses and trucks to certain streets. In this case, now's the time to put in the adoption of designated Mastic Road, Mastic Metro, and Neighborhood Road as your 10,000-plus, 10,000-pound-plus truck routes. There is a special exception in case anyone's concerned about Christmas or holiday gifts that you deliver UPS and FedEx. All delivery trucks who deliver merchandise or pickup merchandise along the streets are accepted.
Mastic Neighborhood Road, Mastic Metro?
Mastic Road, Mastic Metro and Neighborhood Road.
Will we do anything with wait lists?
Those are the designated truck routes. That would be it. Those are the only ones that trucks can stay on.
Yeah, but we don't have buses on.
Okay. Can I just have a hand in this? What's that?
No, we don't.
No, no, no. I just wanted to...
No, because they go down waitress and they go up outside.
Okay. Open it up for a public comment. If you can please sign your name, sign a sheet, state your name, where you live, and one minute, please.
My name is Dick Westhoff, another 25 Blue Point Road, Mastic Beach. I think it's a good idea and I want to consider the fact that you have a house-raising plan and some of these trucks are going to weigh more than 10,000 pounds. Going to have first permits, they're going to have to use roads or how are you going to work that?
I believe if they're coming in, if they have a purpose, if they're delivering or working the area, they're allowed to be on the street. Would you kind of have buses and trucks driving through?
Oh, just through track.
Right. I believe that's the way.
Yeah, I would, yeah. Yeah, I would agree, you know, that the exclusion could be interpreted to include that. I'll just read the exclusion and just, "Such exclusion shall not be construed to prevent, delivery, or pickup of merchandise or other property along the streets and highways from which such vehicles in combination are otherwise excluded." That's a good...
Good point, though. Thank you. No other questions? I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay. So the motion to accept? All second.
All in favor? All right. Pounce.
Okay. Resolution adopting the State of New York Deferred Compensation Plan. Is John coming?
I'm not.
All right. I'll put that, I'll put that to the end. Give some time. Resolution approving the monthly minutes held on November 12, 2013, so move. Second?
Second.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right. Pounce.
Pounce, man. Resolution approving the special hearing minutes held on November 20, 2013.
Second.
Second by you, all in favor?
Pounce.
Resolution approving special public hearing minutes held on November 25, 2013.
Motion. Second.
Yep.
No, I was excuse, I wasn't there.
Nick, second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Pounce.
Okay. Resolution to join the community development block grant in Suffolk County for someone?
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second.
By Nick, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This is first one? Bill?
Me.
Okay.
We have an amendment amending the resolution extending Jennifer Brojew's position as temporary assessor until January 2004, January 31st of 2014. What we're doing is just extending it from December 31st for another month to, as we continue with process.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Pounce.
That was quick.
Uh, not done yet. Let me finish?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we can go right into trustees' reports. Paul?
Yeah. The monthly code enforcement report for November 2013, number of complaints received was 136, number of appearance tickets issued were 10, number unfounded complaints was 20, number of clothes by compliance was 27, and the number of warnings issued was 25.
Thank you. Gary, you have it?
Yeah. The building department report, we had five building permits issued, 24 rental permits were issued, two COs, certificate of occupancy, and one is certificate of compliance. So 61 property searches. And that's basically the building report.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just have a couple of things. Those that might have written the newspaper on Monday, the sand going back on the barrier beach is back on track. It took a lot of yelling and screaming, but thanks to all parties involved, whether it be town, county, state, federal, they came to their senses and they realized that it's very important to get that sand back on the beach, starting mid, possibly mid-January, if not earlier, to the latest of March 15th. They're putting back 1.3 million cubic yards of sand, which would be from the richest inlet to the old inlet cut that was opened during the storm. The height's about, the question whether it's 13 feet or 15 feet, haven't decided yet, and it's going to be very wide, which is good for us because standing on somebody's second-floor balcony last week when we had that minor larista, we actually saw a 13-to-15 foot wave just breaking on the beach. And it was, it was pretty hairy at, at certain points. The other thing, tomorrow, finally, hopefully, my fingers crossed, we'll be closing on a new village hall. And hopefully, maybe, by the January meeting, we'll be meeting in, in the new village hall. Other than that, I will leave it open to discussion.
Yeah, we got to talk about 62 and 80. Because he's got that.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to know about Lindbrook property report, too.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. You can hear me in the back, right?
Yeah.
Okay. There are two properties that the board has to consider what they're going to do with 62 Lindbrook and 80 Lindbrook. Both of those two properties, we just took down the one on 78, 78.
Labor duty.
Labor duty today?
Yes, today.
Yes, today. Okay. These are similar properties that are in similar disrepair, both owned by the county. The county has given us, there are essentially four options for what the board has to decide what they're going to do. The first is that the proposal, again, they're county-owned properties that are up for tax sale. The first is that the village would absorb the cost of removal of 62 Lindbrook and replace a lien on 80 Lindbrook only. And they will sell, the county's proposals is sell 62 Lindbrook to the adjoining neighbors to make their lots bigger, and then 80 would be sold next year and the purchaser would pay the village's lien. Oh, by the way, all this is prefaced on the village, the county's not taking down these properties. So while they are owners, and if they were private owners, they would be responsible for it, they are not taking down these properties because they claim they have the money to do so. The other option the county gave us is that the Mastic Beach could purchase either or both of the lots for fair market value. The approximate value that the county put on 62 is $4,000. The only concern with that is it comes off the tax rolls, it could only be used for open We can proceed under chapter 180 and pursue the county as a nuisance landlord and, but the houses remain while the case works its way through the court system of the nuisance case. And the last is that we pull our breath and hope that the county will put some money in their 2014 budget to take these houses down. So those are the three choices, or four choices, that the village has with regard to demolition, demolition of these two county properties.
If we condemn the property, we still don't get the property. We just take down the house, property remains.
Well, we're not condemning it, but we, yeah, we're not going to do condemnation. We reserved the 180 to knock it down.
Okay.
And so now the question is, if we knock it down, when do we get the money? The county proposal is that we'll get the lien on the one, but we won't get the lien on the other because they want to sell it to the adjoining neighbors. That would keep it on the tax rolls, which is good.
Brian, my question, if the house belonged to Mrs. Smith or Mrs. Jones or whoever, and the house was run down, beat up and whatnot, we summoned them and they appear to court, why can't we have the county come to court?
Well, that's one of the, that is one of the options.
I mean, that's...
And that ties the houses up.
Right. They're not going to get, if the goal is to get them down, that's not going to happen.
But I think at the same time, it may not tie it up as long because what's happening now is you're embarrassing them. They're going to be on front page of Newsday, guaranteed. News 12 is going to say, why are you doing this? I think the only right thing to do is the way we handle it with residents, as far as my views are, the county is a resident and the town is a resident. Anybody who owns property in the village is a resident and they should all have to go through the same procedure. And the simple fact is, because there's two houses on Lindbrook, it could be four houses on Cypress, it could be 10 houses on John's Neck, you know, we'd be taking houses down.
We identified almost 900 houses.
Correct.
Blighted homes. I don't know who owns them, we didn't, you know, we haven't been as researching it, but that's a lot of houses that we're in fact, that we've done.
Right.
You know, we, we're not going to do that house demolition business.
We have put in for a grant to finance the purchasing, removing, or repairing these homes, but we don't have that grant yet. So we can't count on that until it's in our hands.
You know, first, just take, take the money out of, you know, out of our account, pay for it, and hopefully we get it, who knows when, by putting liens on the property. Liens, because that's the urban.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, in my opinion is, I don't think we should be doing that. We should go after them. What's that?
Isn't that what we're doing now, we're putting liens on the property to fence property? We don't know when we're going to get that.
But we can't keep doing it, you know? There's houses all over Mastic Beach that need to come down. We have to start embarrassing them, you know, and take them to court. Let their attorneys come here and explain why they can't do it.
Did you say that? They, they were looking for money for January's budget?
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the hopes. That's what county real estate says, that hopefully, maybe, hopefully, the county will put some money to, to house somebody's house.
Mr. Thompson?
Yep.
And as long as they can find somebody like us to do it, doesn't come out of their pocket, they'll wait forever. So let's embarrass them now and...
So the sense of the board is to pursue with the chapter 1?
Well, it's my opinions over the board. Well, again, like I said, we're going to do it, let's do it now, and let's start hitting them with some. And if they decide in January, they all of a sudden have the money and they'll take them down. But they need to get some, a lot.
Well, what about Habitat program? They want to buy up the blighted homes and rebuild them.
We, we met with Habitat and if we could work out a deal with them, then Habitat would come in and do all those, whatever.
They could buy them up.
Knock them down, buy it out and rebuild the house there. There's several houses going up right now.
The county is popular, it has anything to do with the county.
Correct. And then they gave it to us.
Yeah, they came to us to ask us if we would support it. And we felt we would support a program like that. Take down any blighted and put up a new home and put a homeowner in it is a plus for the community.
Are we allowed, you said that first option, I believe, is to buy out 62?
Yes.
And sell back to the adjacent homeowners?
Well, we, what, what, what they would do is the county would, we would knock down 62, the county would then offer to the adjoining property owners, because they can do that with the county law, to make their lots bigger, so that 62 would then get divided between the two property owners.
So 62 wouldn't become our property to, to sell?
No, no. They would, they would offer to the adjoining owners.
You have a price?
Yes.
So how do we recoup the money for the dollars?
We don't.
62 would pay.
We don't.
We would pay for everything and they would get the money.
Right.
That sounds like a good deal.
Okay.
Brian, how come, how come in the village of Belport, the county seems to find the money within one year to knock down blighted homes?
Yeah, go figure.
And yet these have been here for 20 years. Are we being treated a little differently than the town, the village of Belport?
I don't know.
So maybe we should do, just as Bill said, I'm all for that, I'm all for showing them that we're not going to put up with it anymore.
We met with the county about a month ago and they're taking a house down in Mastic Beach. The county does it their way just to take the house down, it's $40,000 just to take a house down. We've taken, how many houses down? Three houses at one time or what? $11,000?
$9,000.
$9,000, so they have the money to spend $40,000 to take it down their way, then they have the money to take these down.
Why don't they pay us to take it down?
So that's why you have to take them, embarrass them and hopefully something will be done.
Yeah, speak motion to pursue, chapter 18, pursue.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to pursue chapter 18, to get the county their route.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we can move on to the public portion. If anybody would like to speak, please sign the...
Oh, please, what is it? Did you read A?
No, I didn't. I was waiting for somebody to come and he didn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did A, right?
I did A.
No, we didn't wait. We waited. We waited for three minutes.
Oh, the abstract, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, the abstract.
Oh, you were...
I'm sorry, take it. Resolution authorizing the payment of present bills as per abstract and...
It was emailed.
Yes, it was emailed.
It was emailed.
Everybody got your mail?
If email works, I told them to email it.
Oh, we got it. You got to go to 2007. You go online.
Oh, oh, oh.
7 months, probably.
But I, I can't, I can't get, I can't, I can't get the, the abstract, can't, when I go to...
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
I, I can't, shoot, I, I, I don't know if I can do that.
It's very...
She returned him and we're done. If I don't like them, I'll bring them back.
That's my punishment for the team.
Your punishment.
We didn't cooperate any more. We don't care.
I'll bring it up all the way? Yeah, while we're waiting, while we're waiting for them. Just want to let you know that Habitat, the humanity of Suffolk, is offering to assist residents of the damage during Superstorm Sandy to repair their homes. They, they pride themselves on kitchens and bathrooms, that they could do them better and cheaper than anybody. You have to fill out a form, they're on the table over there, they're also on the website, and see if you qualify. But they'll come in and help repair anybody who's still trying to recover from the storm. In addition, also on the table over there is an application. We're asking anyone who has a camera, who has pictures of Mastic Beach that they think are worthy of our new coffee table book that we'll be doing, we'd like you to submit them. All the instructions are on the back. Any questions, give me a call, my number's on there. And we're going to be putting together, through a grant that Suffolk County and Kate Browning has offered the village, we'll be putting together basically the beauty of Mastic Beach. So take a look at that. I'm sure everybody's taken pictures of the community.
Cool.
What's that? One other thing, we still have applications for people who want their home elevated. The village is still working on that grant, we're very close to finalizing it. If you haven't filled out the forms, you must fill it out to be in the system, and we need to come and take pictures of all four sides of your home. So we'd like permission to go on your property if you want home. Make sure the dogs are locked up.
Yeah.
Please.
Also, I was just emailed from New York Horizon. They just asked me one day a week if anybody who's dealing with New York Horizon as far as raising the houses, they want to put a caseworker in village hall one day a week. I'm looking at a Wednesday, probably starting as early as next week, there will be a caseworker there. Right now, the closest caseworker is in Babylon?
No, they're in Patrick now.
But, so your records could be in Babylon, though, right?
They, mine are.
Okay. So if anybody needs to know anything about this caseworker coming in or anything, just let me know and, again, he just texted me, I'll get back to him tomorrow, but I'm going to try to set up starting as early as next week. Okay. Now we'll make a resolution to accept. Authorizing a payment of the present bills as per abstract 7-2013 in the amount of $223,275.69, so move.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
All in.
All in? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment.
Am I? Everybody can go early in it?
Give me two minutes.
Hello, board? Two minutes? I thought it was three. You know, I understand why you want to sue Suffolk County and the blighted homes, but I do want to point out that that seems like the taxpayers are going to pay to sue them and even if we win as Mastic Beach Village, we're going to lose as Suffolk County residents.
We're not suing them.
We're dead.
We're going to summon them. We're going to take them to the...
They're going to have that lawyers come, correct? And that's going to come out of the taxpayers' pockets, essentially.
Like any resident, like any resident that has been summoned in this village...
But I'm paying for them. You're, no other resident is paying. I'm a Suffolk County taxpayer, so I'm going to pay on both ends. I'm just pointing that out.
Okay, so you're saying leave the houses and...
No, I'm saying, I'm saying I think that there should be a way that we could maybe work a little bit more with Suffolk County to get them to...
We haven't been sitting on our thumbs for the last six months. We've been working, meeting with them, and they flat out and come out and tell you, we're not doing nothing about it.
They don't have...
You know what? Then you can tell it to the judge.
Tell it to the judge. All right, I'm just saying, we pay on both ends of it. So I just want to say that as we go into the end of the year and as we go into, as politically incorrect this sounds, Christmas, which is about a man named Jesus Christ who was born, and he was a man who really believed in helping the poor and helping the people who couldn't eat and helping the sick. And I'm sorry Maureen's not here because she and Mario do such a great job and he...
I'm, I'm going to stand in.
You're going to stand in? Okay.
Make sure you open up your, make sure you open your...
They do such a tremendous job and we are a community that, you know, we are a struggling community. Forty percent or more of our community is low-income, are food insecure, which means they go to bed hungry every night. You see the food kitchens, you see the lines in King Column. It's really, it's, it's bad and it's bad out there. And I think we all need to just remember that. I think we need to remember some of the lessons and whether you believe in him or not, he has some good messages. And I think one of them is that we should forgive, we should love, peace, joy, and try and get along. And I think here, that's a good thing for Mastic Beach because if we cannot start to get along, I'm afraid that we will lose out on a lot of good things that we can get. And, and I hope as we go through in the new year, we can all look to not be known so much as the Hatfields and McCoys. And I think that's very important as we move forward. And I wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays, and I'll see y'all here next month.
Maybe not. No, you can still come in. Did anybody else, a couple of, follow comments?
Is there anybody else in the room?
I'd like to go last.
I'll go right here. No. I got this map.
Oh.
Something rose. And I want to just bring up a couple of suggestions, maybe what we could look at. There's a real problem, right? You know, it's fine that we made...
Picture this?
Sorry, Allen Schatz on 232 Mastic Road. It's nice that we made the truck routes and I live on a busy road, I bought the house and all, I live on a busy road and I don't have a problem with that. And now we're making it a little more busy with keeping all the trucks and buses on those main arteries. And I don't have a problem with that either, but the problem I have is the speeds of these trucks. The speeds are out of hand. My wife was hit four months ago, I was hit just the other week, about three weeks ago. These cars are not stopping. They're going 40, 50, 60 miles an hour. I see propane trucks and fuel oil trucks doing 50 miles an hour past my house. There's got to be some way that we can work together with the village to try to resolve the problem of these speeding vehicles. I think there's a couple of different ways we could do it. We had, we had hit and run. I just tell you, my car was hit, there was a hit and run that night that we had on Mastic Road. A few days later, there was a hit and run where the guy was left on the side of the road on Mastic Beach Road. So, you know, I don't, I just, I just think it's something that we need to address and maybe look at putting in a few more stop signs or some flashing red lights. There's a light on Lincoln. Now, they come down south, coming from the, coming from the school, the school zones, the 20 mile an hour school zones. Seems like the problems here in my house have increased since they lengthened that school safety, uh, speed zone. They lengthened it about 300 feet down from Packer going south. And, and they had put those other speed signs in telling you, you're going, you know, giving you a speed and slowing you down way before the old signs were. The old signs were only about 100 feet from the turn. Now, these are about 300 or 400 feet back.
There's a real problem, you know, it's fine that we made the truck... Sorry, Alan Chazlin, two thirty, two Mastick Road. It's nice that we made the truck routes, and I live on a busy road, I bought the house and all, I live on a busy road, and I don't have a problem with that. And now we're making it a little more busy with keeping all the trucks and buses on those main arteries. And I don't have a problem with that either, but the problem I have is the speeds of these trucks. The speeds are out of hand. My wife was hit four months ago, I was hit just the other week, about three weeks ago. These cars are not stopping. They're going forty, fifteen, sixty miles an hour. I see propane trucks and fuel oil trucks doing fifty miles an hour past my house. There's gotta be some way that we can work together with the village to try to resolve the problem of these speeding vehicles. I think there's a couple of different ways we can do it. We had, we had hit and run. The day my car was hit, there was a hit and run that night that we had on Mastick Road. A few days later, there was a hit and run where the guy was left on the side of the road on Mastick Beach Road. So, you know, I don't, I just think it's something that we need to address. And maybe look at putting in a few more stop signs, or some flashing red lights. There's a light on Lincoln, now they come down south, coming from the, coming from the school, the school zones, the twenty mile an hour school zones. Seems like the problems here in my house have increased since they lengthened that school safety speed zone. They lengthened it about three hundred feet down from Packer going south. And they had put those other speed signs in telling you you're going, you know, giving you a speed and slowing you down way before the old signs were. The old signs were only about a hundred feet from the turn. Now these are about three or four hundred feet back. And I think it's just making people aggravated, they get aggravated anyway when you do twenty miles an hour, they wanna run you down and run you off the road. And it's lengthening that amount of time where they get aggravated. So when they break out of that twenty mile an hour speed zone, heading south past my house, they're ready to flirt. They're ready to get back to forty miles an hour, forty-five miles an hour. And you gotta curb right there in the Grace Eastern Church. And there's a problem there because of the line of sight, and also because you had those driveways, one of them was mine, and making that right-hand turn in the driveway. My wife was hit, like I said, four months ago, making a right-hand turn in the driveway. And I was hit a few weeks ago doing the same thing, they're not looking. They're speeding and wanting to go, and they're not watching the traffic and flirting. So one of the suggestions I put on this layout was maybe that we could look at changing the traffic signalers at Lincoln and Mastick Road, and changing that into a four-way stop light, a flashing stop light. As one way to maybe slow that traffic down, because it's right before the bend, and they're coming out of the school zone. So that'll give them an opportunity to stop. And by the time they gain speed, they'll be around that corner and watching what's ahead of them. And I think anywhere that they can stop is gonna make them more aware of what's on the road. And again, it's speeding trucks and cars, I mean, I see motorcycles going down there at seventy, eighty miles an hour in the summertime. Those speed-themed motorcycles that they have. So that's one of the things that I'd like to see, is if the village can look at changing that into a traffic light on Lincoln and Mastick Road, and changing it to a four-way flashing red light. If that's not, if that's not feasible, because I know traffic will back up a little bit there. Maybe another option is to leave it red on the north-south, on Mastick Road, north and south. Leave it red and let the cars pull up and have it change. This way, if there's a string of cars, it'll change and allow the string to leave and go through the traffic light. Something that we can do, just slow that traffic down a little bit, I mean, it's just insane, when they have a green light...
Do we need, do we need a traffic study or an engineer before we make a decision like that? I think you're right, I've been, you know, trying to pull into your driveway, it's the most dangerous...
Except for Gary, all of you have seen... Two things, two things I could do, and one of them I already done. Just before the sergeant left, I requested the speed car to be back at Mastick Beach. We could put the speed car just so people got an idea with it. The second one is everybody goes down by to school and our favorite highway cop there, Mr. Greg Medina's there. Maybe I could move Mr. Medina a little further south on the bend, getting them when they leave the school zone. He's getting them in the schools off, maybe we can have him sit in...
On Washington.
On, what's that?
On Washington.
On Washington, well, we could actually have him sit on Wilson, because Wilson has to come around the turn, so you can get him right there. I'll work on it, let's see if it changes what it wants, give you a couple days, just a...
Well, I, you know, I understand, it's fun though, if anything you do is appreciated. But again, I think it's something that, you know, the cops are there once in a while, they're not there all the time. The way that they enforce the speeds anywhere, it's, you know, one day they're there and then everybody knows for the next three weeks they're safe to speed.
Yeah, but the thing is, no matter what you do, I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent. But all the stop signs in the world, all those speed limit signs in the world, don't mean nothing. People are gonna do them whether the signs are there or not. Best thing to do is have law enforcement there.
Fifty-five miles an hour.
Constantly, not just once every, you know, month, but have them there constantly, and then people will get the idea, you know, you have to slow down.
Well, I think, I understand what you're saying, but I think...
Well, do one better, just change the village's speed limit from thirty to twenty-five.
Well, again, there was another suggestion I didn't put on yet, but...
And a lot of people complain it's taking them too long to get home.
Not the twenty mile an hour there, but you're going around the curve near Grace Lutheran Church, why can't we have a slow twenty mile an hour out? Because it's a curve there. At least that's gonna heighten their awareness, and maybe a driveway ahead sign, so that they know if there's turns, it's gonna be made right into that curve. Something to warn them and to bring their, you know, their minds to that point, the traffic may be turning out.
Alright, we'll definitely...
Something, it's really gotten, it's really out of hand.
We'll definitely look into it, I'll give you an update.
Don't forget, I mean, you had that one guy killed over President's Road and President and Mastick, I mean, gotta, something, whatever.
Okay, thank you.
That whole section from, I mean, it's all twenty miles an hour by the schools.
Correct.
And then it speeds up to thirty, and then it goes back down to twenty-five. By the post office, and they're knocking the post office twenty-five sign over every other night. It's gone again. So maybe we should just change the whole road to twenty-five, and that'd be that?
What's the speed by the school, twenty, isn't it? So if we... Only turn the school out.
Right.
And then it becomes thirty, which is the town...
Then it goes back to twenty-five.
No, by the post office, then it goes back to twenty-five. If we take it from Lincoln all the way up to President, and make it all twenty-five?
You would have to pass the president's before the post office, so just make it beyond the post office. Edwards, or then the next one over.
The one would be Barkley.
Alright, we'll take it under consideration and...
I'll just, just as a added thing, and something I thought of, I didn't mention it, I think that having this slower speed and putting in a couple of vices is gonna encourage people, rather than use Mastick Road as a through road to get down to where they want, or Naval Road. It'll encourage them to go down Williamsburg Parkway, rather than coming around the Shore Cup, where they're gonna be slowed down by stop signs and lights and speed limit. And they'll go down a long way and then come down Naval Road. I almost feel like it's gonna increase traffic through Naval Road, or maybe that's a good thing when it's vehicle traffic and business is sitting there.
The theory is correct, but I think Suffolk County beat it to us, because none of the lights are synchronized on Way Flip on there. So you go light to light to light to light, it takes longer to go down than it would normally, we'll take it under consideration. One more comment?
Hi. Hi, just wanted to thank Marsha, she just gave us a hundred dollars. No, she didn't, but, you know, every penny does help, and what she said is right. I am working at the outreach. We're feeding three hundred and twenty, I'm taking care of three hundred and twenty-seven families just at St. Jude's alone. That goes anywhere from one to, you know, ten, twelve people in the family. But it's amazing, at this time of the year, we all think about how generous we are, and believe me, everybody's been wonderful. But the thing is that don't forget in January, February, because they still have to eat and cook. And I will take over for more reading then tonight, so thank you for everything, and God bless, and have a good Christmas and New Years.
Thank you, you too. Okay. Make a motion, maybe a session? Oh, John's here. John, John, we're waiting for you. Yeah, we're gonna close the, uh, call the portion. Okay, what, we held up till you got here. It was gonna be a resolution, it was gonna be made adopting the Speed of New York Deferred Compensation Plan. John Morris is the treasurer of the village, in case anybody wanted to know what that actually meant, we had ex-John to come here tonight. So John, just briefly, if you could explain to everybody what that means?
Sure. What I was looking to have the village do, is almost every other municipality on Long Island has a New York State deferred comp. It's no cost to the village, what it allows our employees to do is put away money for retirement. There is a pre-tax benefit, which is similar to a 401K plan, it's actually a 457 plan, where the employees can put away money for retirement. There's also an after-tax benefit that's similar to a Roth that they can do after tax as well. I was looking to have the village do both of those plans. So I don't know if anybody has any questions pertaining to that, if they do, I will try to answer. I don't like to be an expert on this subject, but I'll try and answer it if I can.
Marra?
Yeah, so, so this is paid for by the state of New York?
No, it's paid for by the employees themselves.
Completely by the employees themselves?
Correct.
Is it like a 401K, is that what it's called? And can any employee, part-time, full-time, the highway guy?
Correct.
Anybody can use that?
Correct. It's a supplement, it was set up to be a supplement to a person's retirement. So you could either do it with pre-tax dollars, and, you know, if a person made fifty thousand dollars, and they contribute ten thousand dollars, they would obviously be taxed on the lower amount, because you're putting that money away for retirement. It helps a person in individual tax...
So they'd be charged on forty thousand instead of the fifty, is that what you mean?
Correct, yes.
So if they took ten of it, then they're only taxed, they're not taxed on that ten thousand dollars?
Correct, so there are tax benefits to the employees, but there is absolutely no cost to the village itself. And you could do it either pre-tax dollars, which is the 457 plan, or the Roth, which would be after-tax dollars. So there would not be a tax benefit to the employee. But the benefits grow tax-free, similar to Roth that everybody's heard about, hopefully, as well.
And it does work very well, I contributed for almost ten years, and I'm enjoying the benefits of it right now.
That's that from the town?
Yes.
So I just thought that we should do it, because every other place that I've been involved with any other village municipality has always, it's the largest 457 in the world.
I mean, I take it you're reaching out to the guys at the highway and the different people?
What's gonna happen is, one of the reps from the retirement plan is gonna come meet with, first of all, everything is, a page is gonna be given to all the employees, asking if they would wish to participate. There's also gonna, I'm gonna try to get an opportunity for them to, if they have any questions, to meet with the rep and to answer how I'm gonna do that, I haven't decided that yet. But try to get them information, and obviously it's up to the employees whether they wanna participate or not. Any other questions, Mar?
Is there a certain amount of employees that have to say yes before, so one person could...
That is correct.
Correct, and you could, I don't remember what else, but you could put one percent, ten percent, I think you're going to...
Correct, what I was going to give the employees, the option of doing, is they could either give a flat amount each paycheck, so they could decide that they're going to put fifty dollars a paycheck into their, into the 457, or they can put a certain percentage of their salary, so they give the option of either way, what way they wanna do it. I don't know that often, like what the maximum is, that's something that unfortunately I can't answer to you. But there is a maximum, I don't know what it is right now.
Alright.
Billy, just because we're talking about money, a lot of us have gotten letters from the town, from the town, saying we can get reassessed and get our money back from last year's taxes. Has anybody found out if, once we fix the house, if we're gonna be banged for...
No, what do you think, you can answer your own question?
But no one is saying anything, I mean, it's like, somebody's gotta answer that question in like writing?
You say nobody is answering that question, I've answered it numerous times. If your house is being reassessed after the storm, you know when you rebuild your house, it's gonna be reassessed to today's values. If you got away with a year of a low assessment on your house, you're gonna get hit with a high assessment. Most of the people that I talked about that thought it was a good idea came over to me and said, we are not doing it. We're just gonna write it out for the year.
That's what we decided.
And do it, because who knows what the assessment's gonna come back when you rebuild your house? Especially now that it's been raised, it's fixed, looks a lot better than it used to. It's entirely up to the resident. Okay, thank you, John, somebody else has any questions?
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution, are you ready?
I'd like to set a public hearing for the January meeting to change the code from... Right now, our code reads two feet above base blood elevation when we raise our houses. And we've been told by female, we need to go three feet. When rent money comes in, it has to be in our code or it won't be paid for. So we want to change it to three feet above base blood elevation. And the other thing that we need to discuss is as these houses go up, staircases have to come down, they go much further out than they are allowed currently in order to go up as high as some of these houses. We're gonna have to deal with that, so homeowners will now have to deal with the ZDA and the expense of going to the ZDA. So I'd like to bring that up at the next meeting.
And that's gonna be January?
January fifteenth?
I'll second that motion.
I thought you wanted the county petition.
They haven't, nobody's came in, like, to change our resolution on that? We could, we wanna make a resolution to take it off the CSB list and post it on the list.
Okay, we had a resolution previously from our last meeting, where we were looking for two town clerks. And we're gonna take them off the list, or the civil service person, the position. We have gone through the list and have found that applicants are looking for the position. So I would like to change that resolution now, that we hire them, you know, to post in the...
To Village Hall.
To Village Hall, as we do others, please.
You make any motions?
I'll make a motion to protect that resolution.
Okay, I'll second it. All the favor? All is done? Okay.
Now? Before I make a motion to adjourn, I wanna wish everybody a safe and healthy holiday. Stay safe, there's some crazy weather out there. And like always, if you need anything, you've got my number. Have a nice holiday, everybody, and see you next year. Make a motion to adjourn? And the mic, yeah, all the...
Thank you, you did great, yeah.